Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Written by a Rochesterian, by the way. Did you know that?
We're still doing trivia, huh?
Yeah.
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to your left of the room. In event an emergency, please move in a common orderly fashion down the stairs and please do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each and every time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda. Extra copy should be near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representative shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and then present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If the case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application will come to the podium, identify themselves along with their address, and direct any questions directly to the board. Once all input has been completed and the applicant and/or representative will be given an opportunity to respond to any of the public input, once all the public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at that point. And with that, Michelle, will you please call the first case?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item on the agenda is case number PB 1805-1, upon the matter of request by I-Square LLC for revised site plan and signage approval, amending the proposed brewery located on premises 775 and 795 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district.
Good evening, Board. Mike Nolan from I-Square with offices at 400 Bakers Park. We're here tonight seeking your approval to amend or alter the site plan that was approved just a few months ago. Essentially, to recap the changes from that would be to increase the size of the brewery and eliminate the building that was labeled as common building on the site plan and also the addition of our signage, which we've provided illustration and a lighting plan for. Leslie, would you pass out?
Thank you. Perfect package. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, kind lady.
Now, Leslie gave you, we received a list.
Give one to the attorney, too. I'm sorry.
Skipped him.
Thanks very much.
So, we received an email from Michelle recapping the comments from the workshop last Monday and made a list of those that we've included in your packet and the responses accordingly and then backup documentation for each of the responses. So, I'd like to run through them if we can. And so, one was looking for the lighting photometric plan to reflect the proposed changes. That would be in your second part of the packet, which is all about lighting and the larger scale drawing there. Essentially, the lighting on the site, just to recap it a little bit, really didn't change. It's a small building located somewhat inboard on the site and had very little impact, but we did include the actual fixtures that would be installed on the exterior of the facility and incorporated the appropriate lumens with each of those.
Mr. Nolan, my copy is kind of hard to see. Maybe you can walk through it a little bit?
I know Diane spent some time working on this today, so we could run through it.
So... Yes, I'm sorry. Hello, Diane Saicron. I live on Bellhurst Drive. The architectural drawing, when we get to the elevation, shows the addition of three more lights than were on with the previous plan that got approved. Two are on the east side of the addition, on the overhead doors, and one is on the west side of the addition, between the building and the stockade fence. So, our lighting...
Could you possibly put one up on the board, just so everybody can see it at home? Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you there. If you need assistance, please.
So, our printer printed out the first two pages. Pretty dark. It's a, what's the word? Just an illustration of how the lights look at light, but the important pages are page three. You can see that we increased the number of fixtures for the RAB ALED 52N fixture, up to seven now for the building. And then, page four is actually the photometrics.
I'm sorry. So, you said seven, but the sheet says six. Am I looking at that right?
I'm sorry. It's nine. I apologize. Your copy should say nine?
I'm looking at number of lamps. Am I looking at the wrong column?
I'm sorry. What's that?
Where do you represent that?
Yep. Yeah, it's item D. Yes, I'm sorry.
So, go ahead. I'm sorry. Now I'm caught up.
That's it. So, they're LED lights.
Excuse me. The forty total, is that on the one building?
You mean for item E? That's showing forty?
Yeah.
No, that's from the cottage buildings that we didn't change from last time.
Okay, so the total number would be forty. That would include the entire site, not just one building that we're doing tonight?
Right. Item D is only relevant to the building we're talking about tonight.
Got it. Thank you. Does anybody have any other questions on that, as we go on through it, just to not double back? If not, we can move on to the HVAC request.
And I apologize. The copy quality is pretty poor. I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right spot on this, so... I don't know if everybody else is having the same issue, so... So, this is the building that's going to be on Titus? So, where's the barn? Over here? Same thing? Okay. Thank you. I'm good. Actually, Diane, before you, could you flip this up and just point it out to everybody? I want to make sure everybody understood what he pointed to for me. I don't think we're going to be able to see it on TV. I don't think we're going to be able to see. I don't think you're going to be able to see. Does anybody else have a question? I want to make sure that you understand where he pointed out for me. Is everybody else okay?
Where the building locations are.
I'm good with it.
Everybody? Good? Yes? Okay. We're good. Thank you.
The second feedback we received from the workshop was the location of the HVAC units for the brewery. And those are now included in your drawing labeled A100. It'll be just above the word floor plan on the drawing. You'll see the location of the, I'm sorry, those are the totes.
Just around the corner there.
Yes, just around the corner from that, yes. Does anybody have any questions on the location of the HVAC?
Looks like we're okay. Oh, go ahead.
Yeah, the only question I did have was the noise level on it. I mean, it's pretty much situated, so it's not going to be on the neighbor's side.
Correct. We situated on the backside. It's not much bigger than a home level one. I mean, the brewery by square footage, most homes have two and a half or three tons of cooling. This is likely to be five tons. We have one five-ton and two ten-ton of comparable units sitting on our rooftop, which is within 10 feet of patrons, and we find that the rooftop volume is quite, you know, is accessible. And that would be five times the cooling amount that we'd have on our building one. And again, it's within acceptable range for people to dine and sit for, you know, 10 feet from them. Thank you. Anybody else with questions on the HVAC side? The brewery, to submit and depict location of the kitchen brewery ventilation units, that would be located in the, well, if you see, in A200. Both ventilation in the brewing area and in the cooking area are both rooftop updraft units. They are comparable, again, to what we have on our building one. We have five of them located on our building and also sit very close to them. And they're modulating, meaning they go up and down depending on the amount of heat that's detected in the exhaust side. And they're relatively quiet. They're more quiet than our HVAC units are.
I must admit, I don't know what the odor is from a brewery. Is that, it's a pretty noxious odor when they're brewing, or they're roasting coffee beans. I'll be honest with you. I can smell that from time to time. Not at your location, obviously, but another location. Is that the same kind of, what kind of odor should we expect?
Really don't. It's, most of the brewing process is contained in pressurized vessels, if you will. Therefore, most of that action and the rail emulsion and production of that would be contained within those vessels. There is going to be some odor, especially as they're adding ingredients and that. I wouldn't think any different than any restaurant. Certainly, we've been patronizing a lot of small breweries in the area over the last two months. And we've, I've had a lot of backroom tours, full tours, full facility, show me, you know, the equipment and everything. I haven't had anything and I'm not, you know, I've been through a lot of food service plans, so I get exactly where you're coming from, but this is nothing like that.
Is it like a hoppy smell or a yeasty smell?
I did get a little bit of hoppy smell because one of the breweries where they were brewing while we were in there, but most of the others, I didn't see them in the, you know, action, but it smelled a little bit like beer, but that was inside the facility, not outside.
Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome. Anybody else with any questions on the ventilation?
Looks good.
The, to submit and writing a construction schedule, and we put that right in this document here. Obviously, we're subject to weather a little bit, especially in the early portion of our work, but we are underway on the site work now and expect to complete most of that in the next six to eight weeks. So, we're in the, you know, midsummer range. The driveway and primary drive down through the middle of the site, we expect to have completed this fall. Will be working on, hopefully have the structure, foundation, walls, roof, windows dried in prior to fall, when the weather starts to get more questionable, so that we can do most of our interior work and actually building the brewing equipment into the fall months with hopes of opening this winter. And then, we're looking at the market building or the front building on that site in next summer's construction season. Anybody have any questions on the timeline? Be more precise. It's a little gray, you know. So far, I try to be, not to be too optimistic as I normally am with timelines, but that's reasonable. Identify locations for garbage tote storage pickup and provide, illustrate that they're sufficient to serve the site. The sufficiency level is a little bit hard to prove on an entity that isn't opened yet, but we've observed the others as, again, visiting other brewers. Both the few that did have dumpsters were either shared or not fully utilized. There really isn't a lot of waste, disposable waste created in the process. The location is identified on your drawing A100 that we provided.
So, Mr. Nolan, I notice on...
Or A200.
A200.
A200, sorry.
The north elevation, it appears that you can see the totes from the, I would say, from the front of the building. Is that correct or is that just the way the picture looks?
It's, if you had that direct of view, yes, you could see the side of them. Pretty unlikely, but yeah, when looking at it directly on, they would be down the side of, the west side of the building, which for that three feet you were driving by there, you could observe the side of them. I think, I'm not objecting to put up a small fence if you think that's better, but it's way back in the building, so it's, I really don't see that as being viewable from Titus.
I think it's a depth thing, but I don't know, because this looks pretty far back, but this looks pretty close, so...
It does. It does. It's just in looking at it in a two-dimensional drawing.
I just have a question about how the toters will get to the street. Since there's no sidewalk or path around, are they going to go back in through that door there, through the brewery and then out to the street for...
I believe they'll go straight north up the side of that, whether it's, I don't think there's a walk up that way, but it's certainly navigable for a tote.
I was just, I guess I was considering winter time is all, when there'll be snow.
Yeah, it might be a little more...
...pulling that or...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we're pretty conscious of keeping all the walks in common, you know, and working areas clear.
So, it won't be a predetermined path. It'll just be a path that an employee shovels when need be?
Yes, the path that makes the most sense. Once we determine the exact pickup location, which initially, we're looking at the end of that parking lot to bring them straight north. End of that parking lot, the pickup truck, truck picking the product up could pull in, turn right, go right up, as they like to pull up to the front side of them and pick them up, empty them, return them there, and we could go right back down the side of the building.
Is it against any type of rules to pull them back through the building?
I don't think so. I haven't heard of that.
Yeah, because I guess if it's not against some type of rule, then I suppose that would be fine, especially if it's on off-hours when there aren't patrons there.
Right.
That's what I was thinking.
Right. You know, we're looking at starting out with two and a recycling, and we think that will be adequate up through operation.
Thank you.
No problem. Any other questions on the totes? And this is already in practice at the Herex Jordan Air Plaza. All four, five businesses along there use totes and bring them up for a pickup at that time.
What's the schedule on the pickup? You probably haven't navigated that yet.
I haven't got there yet. Our current is on Monday and Thursdays. Monday is refuse and Thursday is recycling, but that's, I don't know if the tote trucks follow the same schedule, because ours are dumpsters at the I-Square location.
Okay. Thank you.
We talked about traffic analysis and if this would have any, you know, expanding that and the additional 13 seats, 14 seats, sorry, that if that would have any traffic impact. And because it is on a county road, I think it was left that we'd wait and hear their feedback, and we did receive their feedback today. There's no mention of the traffic in it or no concern observed with that. One other thing to note, that when the original, when we hired TY-Lyn to do the traffic analysis, the building, the market building or the front building on this parcel was sized at 15,000 square feet during our process in laying out the site and what you approved was our building, which is just short of 10,000 square feet. So, I'd submit to you that any increase you'd see in the brewery is outweighed three or fourfold in the other direction from the reduction of the size of that facility. Anybody have any questions on the traffic side?
Anybody got any questions on that?
I'm not so sure that we actually heard anything from the county on this. It said it was submitted to them.
Actually, may I update? I was actually going to update the board. So, I called the county DOT and spoke to John Raymond, who is in charge of permitting, to understand or clarify the comment. The comment in the Monroe County notation is just regarding what permits might be needed from, through MCDOT. When I asked, I asked directly about traffic and they had no concerns about traffic impact associated with the revision to the site plan. Otherwise, they would have indicated in the memo that a traffic impact assessment or analysis or updated information was needed, and that's not the case. So, the clarity that DOT is seeking is just in terms of what future right-of-way permits or work permits might be needed for work in the right-of-way. And generally speaking, this planning board as a baseline for the approval on the listed of conditioned things, all the other agencies that might have impact are mentioned, and Monroe County DOT is always included because all of our primary roads are Monroe County DOT, and so, no plan, no building permit or CFO could be issued until the Monroe County DOT permitting process has been navigated.
I have a question. When the county considers these requests or these referrals, do they only consider traffic impact to their roads or do they also consider traffic impact to town roads like Lorraine?
So, for the county's purposes, they're going to be most interested in the impact to their roadway, which this property borders. So, Titus Avenue would be the primary. If they were to require an impact analysis of some sort, it wouldn't be limited just to their road.
Okay.
That helps.
So, yes, they did consider the impact on Lorraine, is what you're telling me?
Well, what I'm, no, what I'm saying is that when they, in this instance, they're not asking for a traffic analysis because they didn't think it warranted one, or that they were comfortable with the previous submissions or planning information that was provided as part of previous applications.
And that was represented to you verbally today?
Today, when I spoke to John Raymond, he just said that there was no issue with traffic.
Any other questions? We're good?
Great. Thank you. The seventh item was to submit and writing signage lighting details. So, we provided a cut sheet on the light. It's the RAB HBLED 13YB, small conical-shaped light. And they would be ground-mounted and facing up at the sign from either side.
How many degrees Kelvin is this light?
Could you say that again? I'm sorry.
How many degrees Kelvin is this light? I've got two measurements on here, a blank one at 5,000 and a yellow or warm at 3,000.
I'm not sure I know the answer to that. Right with me here.
Oh, that's okay.
But it was, that was the exact fixture that was used in the lighting lumen plan, because it's, the lumen plan's done by the same supplier that we buy this light from.
I think it's previously been this board's concern that it not be above 3,000 Kelvin.
Yeah, it says it on the first page, 3,000.
Okay. Oh, and you're talking about the color where they get real purply looking and, yes, no, we're not, not a big fan. There's some gas stations that have that look and then four or 5,000. I didn't understand the term Kelvin. I'm sorry.
Yep. No, thank you.
Is that going to be turned off at close or a certain time?
It'll be, they'll be on a timer. I'm not sure if it would go to close or an hour after close, which is what we typically do at the other I-Square sites.
And I apologize, I missed the workshop. What is the proposed time of close?
We talked about that, go ahead Bernie, if you want to jump in there.
Yeah, so we discussed it as a board.
Excuse me, Chairman, would you mind using your microphone for the folks at home and for the recording as well? Thank you.
I get now what I was going to say.
Wow.
So, this was discussed at the workshop. The board cannot actually set the times per Monroe County, is it?
No, it's actually through the state liquor authority.
So, I was just going to say, so, any discussion about hours and lighting after hours, et cetera, I would defer to the New York State Liquor Authority and recommend that you do that on those types of issues, because that'll be part of the applicant's licensure with the liquor authority.
However, the applicant did share, unless it's changed. You planned on closing at 10?
That's our impression. It's still, we don't want to become, in all our facilities, our close, current at the reserve, our close at either 10 or 11 o'clock, depending on the night of the week. And being that a lot of us start there at 7:00 in the morning, that's plenty.
Yeah, so we discussed at the last workshop to remove that condition.
Yes.
And did we do that or do we have to officially do that?
Thank you.
I think we would have to do it now, right?
We never had the authority to put it in anywhere, so I'm not sure that we need to remove it.
There was a condition on our last ruling.
Yeah, and that was just based on representations that were made as part of the last application. So, I think here, we can clarify when you issue the revised site plan approval that hours will be based on the applicant's approval obtained from the New York State Liquor Authority.
That way, if he does want to change his hours, he can, because we can enforce that condition anyways.
Correct.
Can we put in the lighting, though, we can't touch?
No, you can touch. You could say, you know, an hour after close or something like that.
Okay.
I wouldn't tie it to a specific, my point was a specific hour in the evening.
No, I wouldn't say 1:00, but I would.
Correct.
I mean, we're dealing with another issue, staff and I, on another property in town, so I would like to see something, and I'm sure it's not in the applicant's interest. Security is one thing.
I'm going to come back to that condition, just to make sure. I caught the one that the lawyer said, but I'm not sure if you're talking about the whole building or just the sign. We were just talking about the sign.
I think at some point when we're going toward a motion, we can discuss that.
Okay. I like to keep notes, that's why.
Yep. No, I appreciate that, Mr. Chair.
And is there any concern with that, that we could discuss while we're having open dialogue?
Let's go through the issues and then come back. We'll...
You got it.
I got it as a note.
Okay. Submit and writing final choice for the siding material for the addition of the barn. We did decide on the, using the Hardy plank, which is a composite board, and we provided a picture of it in your packet. It looks like this, with an example of how it looks. It'd be vertical, beveled edge, and, you know, trimmed out, actually, probably similarly to the what, the illustration you have here. you know, trimmed out, actually quite similarly to the, what, the illustration you have here.
Is this the actual color? Or is this just a?
It's, it's a paintable product. It does come in a couple of, they got four or five choices for like standard colors, but typically, and you have to, you have to paint it in anyway, cause the nail holes and the edges, um, are not. So it'd be back to a paint color choice, but it's gonna be something in that family or in that kind of hue, if you will, cause that, it does complement the, the existing barn well. Any questions on the siding or concerns? Um, and then the, um, Spencer, you had brought up about the apron at the, um, overhead door. Uh, that was, I believe, corrected in your, um, newest drawings.
A one hundred?
Yes.
Yep, yep. Just a minor thing.
Yes, but yeah, good point.
So, Mr. Nolan, the boards had the, I'm sorry, was there any questions on the apron before? You're good?
Yeah, I guess for now.
Okay, so, um, the board had the opportunity to understand what you're planning on doing, but I'm not so sure the public has. So could you just once again describe the change from the, I think it might be worthwhile, and you have a diagram behind you to show?
Certainly. All right, you hear me? So, um, the existing barn that, uh, I see along Titus, uh, one at, uh, seven seventy-five Titus Avenue, this is the existing, um, face front. Obviously, it'll be updated, the doors, windows. Um, there's, we wanna add a addition out the back of the building, uh, which they would, uh, reverse the gable of the roof to being, uh, north and south. And, uh, two overhead doors, this would be a brewing area. Uh, in the back area, a patron area here, and an entry and a merchandise area up front. Um, the, um, the asphalt roof and, um, Hardy board sided. Um, and I think it's gonna look really sharp.
And seating is going to be?
Sixty-three seats, sixty-two seats.
Okay, thank you. So with that, does the board have any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Carrie, um, I don't know if I have it in front of me, but the Monroe County letter. Could you just give us a little overview of that, just to make sure?
Sure, so the, the, the county, um, in their review sometimes identifies, um, additional, uh, layers of review or other items to, um, for the planning board to be mindful of. Most of these you've already addressed in the previous site plan approval and the proposed modification in this site plan isn't really impacting it. Additionally, it's, uh, should be noted that there is a filed, uh, SWIP associated with this project. And so many of the comments related to stormwater runoff or erosion control, those kinds of things, um, uh, will be addressed or are being addressed, um, through the, the building, uh, process. Additionally, all, some of their, their language about the other, um, county reviews or, um, state reviews that might be needed are common, um, uh, comments that they would provide to a project of this nature. And it's standard operating procedure for an applicant to have to go through the other, uh, review processes or permitting processes during the course of, um, of bringing a project like this or implementing a project like this and, and building it. So, um, they're just making sure that this board is aware that there are other agencies that will have, um, some role to play as the applicant moves forward with, um, aspects of the project that relate to this specific component, meaning the brewery.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So does the board have any questions for the applicant or staff regarding?
I just have one question for the applicant on the handicap, uh, parking space on the east side of the building. You have the unloading zone there. Should there be a curb cut at that unloading zone?
Catching up to you, you're on drying, uh?
I'm on C three.
Okay, perfect. And we're?
We're on the eastern, there's the, the accessible parking spot there right on the corner.
Yeah.
Then you have the unloading zone. Should there be, uh?
We thought, and, and we, as we had planned that, that they would come back out to, they'd go to the crosswalk because, um, it would be the natural path if you got out of a vehicle at that location. If you go up to the sidewalk directly or straightforward onto it, you'd be coming up to the side of the building and still have to navigate around front. The other, um, not unheard of to have it in front of there. It just, uh, we would end up having to widen that sidewalk to allow the, for the five, four, five of the handicap entry. Um, just because it was ten feet from the other, I think, was the reason we had not.
And, and it's, and it's okay. I was just wondering what the rationale was there. So, thank you. That, that's all. And Mike, the applicant did say for your benefit, since you weren't at workshop, that the main entrance is off of the Titus Ave.
Right, I, yeah, I caught that on the.
Okay.
Yeah, um, that's my only comment. Thank you, thanks.
Um, one, one comment and one question. I guess I'll, I got a question sort of for staff. Um, Carrie, do we have any light spill requirements? I'm looking at the east side of the property where there's that one new light fixture that's proposed. And I may follow up with a question for the applicant, but I'm just wondering if there's any requirements based on the fact that it's commercial to residential as far as light spill on the adjacent property.
I will, um, tell you that I will quick check the code for you and confirm that.
I don't remember there being anything.
I'm not aware of that either. Um, and so, um, I can, I can double check, I can confirm that.
Okay. And then maybe my question for the applicant then is, would, would you guys be opposed? I mean, I'm assuming that's a security light more than anything for the, the, uh, toter area and the door back there. Would you be opposed to possibly, I know Rab Lighting makes, um, various wattages? May, maybe lowering that to like a twenty-six watt or something, just to reduce some of the light spill on the neighboring property?
Yeah, there is a stockade fence between the two and, and I think that'll block a lot of it, but I, I'm not objected to tone that down a little bit.
Okay.
Just a question, is that a, that's a business, right? Or is there also a residence there?
Uh, neck, it depends on how far back in the property you are. The next door is Dr. Lands of Fame, uh, that's a business or office there. Um, as you progress back and get toward the barn or behind the barn, um, you begin the properties along Lorraine Drive back up to it. So their houses are a ways away from it, but their back of their property line does, is adjacent. Um, to the, when you get to the additions for certain, uh, the addition to the barn.
Right, I'm sorry, so Spencer, the one light you were talking about, was that the one near the parking lot or?
No, it's the one that's back over the toter, so it would be, I think, more in the residential zone.
Correct.
Yeah. And just to answer your question, Spencer, I'm not aware of any spillage requirement in the code, but it is reasonable for you to impose a condition like that. And suggested condition might be for the applicant to endeavor to minimize spillage on adjacent properties through, as you suggested, a lower wattage fixture or down tilt. Okay, thanks, so I'll head.
Correct, and the fixtures themselves, Diane, are down tilt, right? Yeah, the fixtures themselves, um, as the, um, Rab ALED fifty-two N. Um, and we have these on a number of our buildings, really do a nice job providing a secure way to get into the building, but they don't, uh, they're not intended to light your parking lot. But we still don't have an objection in toning that down a little bit, Spencer.
I just have one more question, if I can, Mr. Chair. I don't wanna, the garbage area between where the cans are gonna be at the end of the building, basically to the front, is that about seventy-eight feet?
Sounds about right, yes.
Okay, and then it's a ten-foot wide section on your property, right?
Correct.
All right, I just, something just strikes, I, as a kid, I would've told you that I would never have drug those things across the, uh, the lawn. I mean, it's just gonna be, during the winter, it's gonna be a brutal, and I think that what's gonna happen is you're, we're gonna see those in some place that you didn't intend to and the town doesn't wanna see them there. So, I'm just trying to think of a adequate solution for that.
If it's all right to bring it through the building, then I think that that's okay as long as there aren't any like health department or something rules against that. That would seem to make the most amount of sense, especially during the winter. And, and it looks like that's not even an area where patrons would be. It looks like it's the brewing space.
Correct, right, so I really don't, and it's got an overhead door out the front of that, by the east side.
I think that kinda makes sense and gives them an out in the winter if there's a horrible snowfall or whatever.
Yeah, yeah, cause that might be a long path and, you know, we could alter that, the pickup location once we see how it flows and see what makes the most sense there, but that'd be one day a week.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I only have one, um, question, comment, and that's about the traffic study. I still am kind of unconvinced about the way that the numbers are calculated on the traffic study, but I think that if it were calculated in a different way, I'm not sure that it would even be substantial enough for me to think that it were not appropriate either. If the rest of the board feels agreeable to the way that the traffic study's been, you know, calculated now, then I'm willing to go along with that.
Yeah, I think the way we left that workshop was to see if Monroe County came back with any comments and then make a determination. Pass. You pass? Any others? Before I open up the public hearing? Okay, thank you, if you could have a seat. With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Please come to the podium, state your name and address. And please direct all your questions to the board and only the board.
Good evening, my name is Ann Burns. I live at one ninety-nine Bellhurst Drive. And I'm here this evening representing our community group Helping Arundic quite Plan for Progress that focuses on the Titus Cooper Hudson District. Um, we appreciate that the Nolan family is retaining the historic barn and repurposing it as a brewery and a pub. And we're also grateful for them retaining that mature oak tree that's adjacent to the barn. Um, based on the information that we were provided, um, we offer just a couple of comments um, on the brewery sign. Um, we, we really believe that that sign is, is elegant. Um, it will be a nice addition to the streetscape on Titus. Um, we appreciate that the sign complies with the design guidelines for the district and that it will be externally lit. Um, we also appreciate that the light will be on a timer. That's gonna be important, uh, for the residential people around the business. Um, in terms of the brewery addition, um, we believe it's well scaled to the existing barn building. Um, it's an excellent way to repurpose the historic structure to maintain the original appearance of the building from Titus Avenue while adding the space and the features necessary for the new business to be successful. Um, in terms of the color of the barn, what we saw in the drawings that we obtained from the planning department, it looked like it was in the gray family. Um, we didn't know if it was gonna be the granite or the sparrow colors that I have the paint chips for, and I gave those to everyone on the back of our comments, um, that are gonna be on the cottages. Um, we wondered if it was possible to incorporate more of the Benjamin Moore Rustique, which is the red brown. Because in the existing barn as it is right now, the one, the eve, um, on the north face, the very small eve that's up on the upper level, and the big eves on the east and the west have this type of color, um, that goes with, um, the roof. So we wondered if it would be possible, um, and that's the coloring that's gonna be used for the logo on the sign. So we just wondered if, if it were possible to include more of this color. Um, and although the barn's not been designated a historic structure with a capital H, it is the responsibility of the Arundic quite Preservation Board as a certified local government program to recognize that historic buildings, sites and neighborhoods form the core of economically stable and attractive areas which make an important contribution to the quality of life, um, in Arundic quite. They're also charged with seeking opportunities to preserve the special character of the community and our neighborhoods and integrate historic resources into planning efforts. And in that regard, we just wondered if the Preservation Board had had a chance to look at this, um, this application and, um, the fact that they might wanna wish, um, you know, some sort of comment and formally recognize the brewery as a possible example of how to repurpose a historic building to support a new enterprise while maintaining special character of the neighborhood. So, we didn't know if that had been offered to them. Um, we know it wasn't a designated structure.
So, can I ask staff to respond to that? Cause we did look into that.
Um, I'm sorry, making sure my mic is on. Um, so we did review this, um, with consultation with the deputy town attorney. They expressed, um, uh, responsibilities and, uh, a, a sort of, uh, their tasks, available tasks. Um, planning board review or comment on an application was not among them. And so to introduce that at this time would not have been appropriate, and it's just not built into the code. So the code doesn't really provide, um, a mechanism by which something could be referred to or, um, reviewed by.
Not my understand, I mean, I've spoken to people at the state, um, historic preservation.
I'm refer, I'm referring to our town code and where the outline, the powers and duties of the Preservation Commission are enumerated. The, that level, that type of review isn't, um, isn't included. And so, it just is from a process standpoint, wanting to be, um, you know, certainly just wanting to, and, and certainly Rob, jump in here if I'm not stating this accurately or, or, um, as eloquently as I should, but we're, from a process standpoint, not wanting to require, um, a step that isn't really, isn't provided for in, through our code.
Cause other communities that do have historic preservation boards do have input, so.
So their code must be written differently than ours.
And there's typically in those communities, there's, in the historic preservation regulations, there's a mandatory referral mechanism that would require certain applications for certain resources to go to that board. In this town, based on how the code's written currently, there's not that mechanism in place. So to refer this application would be somewhat arbitrary in light of the requirements of the code and the way it's been applied to other applicants.
Okay, so it needs to be included in the code. I mean, we've talked to you guys about having, um, the registry done of historic properties and that's something that needs to be done.
So that, from a, from a town, not from this board, but as a, a process, as, uh, either an inventory, that, that's a separate, a separate matter for sure, but something that we're mindful of. So we appreciate that comment.
Okay, and can the code be updated as well? That would be worthwhile since we have so many historic structures.
Can certainly make sure that's a, the comment is, um, provided to town board.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Anybody else that wishes to address the board? Seeing nobody else, um, I'll wait a second here, make sure we're all cut up. So we good? Okay to close the public hearing? Public hearing's closed. Um, before we deliberate, Carrie, you passed out. Do you wanna allow? I'm sorry, I do like to respond.
I think so. Um, just a couple of things. The paint and the trim color she referred to was done by our staff um, when I had, when I first bought the property on the front of the barn. So it's, um, it's in our taste and our style to keep it like, um, what, um, Ms. Burns mentioned. Uh, secondly, we did also, as part of one of our New York State grants, have to get a, um, a chipper letter, a, uh, from the state stating the historic properties that are in the area and make sure that we were not affecting any. And Arundic quite United Church of Christ is a historic building and the only one in a half-mile radius or so of the I-Square site. And so it's not on there, but of course, um, being longtime residents and, uh, long history with the Ver Cruzy property in my own life, um, wanna take care of that barn just as if it was historic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else?
So we might have questions, but, or I'm sorry, we're, we're all set, thank you. Um, could you please review the, um, part two of the secret?
I sure can. I don't know if I, oh, Michelle took my copy. Hang on one second.
My apologies.
No, no worries. Here, one for you, one for me. Um, sorry.
Um, sorry about that delay, so, um, in, in looking at this application, it's a modi, a modification to the previously approved site plan that also had a previously, um, approved by this board determination of significance for a negative declaration. However, in, in sort of belt and suspenders, uh, fashion, we decided to, um, take another look at the modification separate, or not separate, but, um, make sure that nothing associated with this particular change, changed the previous determination of significance, um, associated with the entire I-Square, um, redevelopment and site plan approval. And so, we, uh, noted that the, um, the modifications to this site plan call for the removal of a previously approved or preliminary approved freestanding 2,400 square foot, two-story common building, and then, uh, changes the previously, um, uh, proposed addition from 528 to, um, 1728 in the, um, and so, the, there's actually a net decrease in the overall square footage associated with the, uh, project. In looking at the potential impacts, community character and land use, the proposed site modification is in keeping with the design theme of the overall development, and the addition maintains an appropriate scale and proposed materials are in keeping with the existing building and also complementary to the, um, the proposed site. Um, from a trap, for traffic, the change in building layout is, and is not associated with any significant changes to potential trip generation based on the previously approved site plan and the associated traffic analysis that was performed as part of that, um, review. Um, the increased seating capacity is minimal and not going to generate, um, any changes in traffic. Also would point to the fact that Monroe County DOT, in light of reviewing the plan currently before the board, didn't call for any, um, change or new, uh, traffic study or analysis to go with this particular, um, modification to the site plan. So, the other note, um, for the purposes of seeker is that the proposed modifications are on a portion of the site that's not closely located to any natural features, um, therefore, there's no larger, larger matter, moderate impacts associated with, uh, the changes associated with the site plan, so for those reasons, we're recommending a negative declaration for the, for seeker.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions on that before? Okay, um, so before we start deliberating, is there any questions for the applicant before we start? That would be the time to ask, any last questions? You look good, okay. So, thank you. So, based on that...
Would you like a motion, Mr. Chair?
I just wanted, I wanted to make a comment real quick, if that's, if you got time.
All right, it's going on eight o'clock, Mike, we're done.
We'll take a motion to see if we, no, go.
I just wanna say, I think this is a welcome change, I think it's a welcome addition to that brewery, I think this is gonna be a great, uh, addition to, uh, an already, um, blossoming Arundic quite neighborhood. I think the sign looks really nice, and I, and I'm happy to see a lot of thought put into that, and I, and I just wanna, um, I guess echo Anne's appreciation of the fact that you are repurposing a historic building and not rebuilding something. Whether or not, you know, town preservation board can make comment on the application is, is, is no matter, and the fact that you have made an attempt to save a historic building, and, and whether it's on a list someplace or not, uh, I think we all can appreciate that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead with your motion.
Uh, I do have a comment I wanna add, so thank you for coming to the workshop, and thank you for following up on all of the, um, the things that were asked for at the workshop, that was appreciated. Having said that, I captured a couple, um...
Do you wanna do seeker first, Mr. Chair?
Yes, let's get seeker out of the way, so, with that, do I have a motion for seeker?
Sure, on PB 18051, I would, uh, make a motion that this is an unlisted negative action, negative declaration.
I like that better.
Unlisted action, and you're proposing?
A negative declaration, yeah.
Do I have a second?
All second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have one absent. So, passes six to one. Okay, before we get to the, oh...
Six, one, six to one, an absent.
Six and one absent, thank you. Before we get to, um, the motion, um, I captured three things. One was, um, hours for the lighting of the sign to be enforced by the New York State Liquor Authority, or was that hours for the building, I couldn't remember.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
Hours of operation.
I'm not so sure that we need to even say that, I mean, that goes without saying. If the applicant chooses to do shorter hours, he can do that, he cannot open before eight in the morning, and he can't, he has the option of closing at two, but between two and eight, he doesn't have an option to do any business.
Yeah, I think just to clarify the, the approvals for this particular app, application, the condition should read hours of operation, um, to be determined by the State Liquor Authority, because that's gonna be delineated on the permit.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the lighting hours, I would like to see those being recessed to whatever the lowest security level is or the greatest security level, I don't know how I wanna say that, um, one hour after the closing.
So, are you talking hours of the building, hours of the sign, that's where I got?
Hours of the lighting.
Lighting.
Lighting. So, I would suggest safety and security lighting onsite to remain on one hour after close or longer if required by the State Liquor Authority.
One hour or longer.
One hour, comma, or longer, if required by the State Liquor Authority.
Past closing.
Past closing.
And then there was also another one to minimize the lighting spillage on the neighboring properties. Is that sufficient, or do you wanna be more specific?
I, I, my opinion is it should be a lesser wattage fixture, but, that's, I don't know what you guys think.
The applicant was fine with it too, was he?
So?
Yeah.
So, lower wattage fixture to minimize the lighting?
Yeah, I like that, that's better, thank you.
Okay, so I'm gonna make this motion.
Wait, I have a question.
Yeah, there's a couple other things.
Uh, it's my understanding that all the other conditions that we had made, um, prior on the prior site plan still stand, so we don't have to go through all that again, is that right?
Correct, and, and Brad, if you're more comfortable with a, a statement that says that, then we could certainly include that.
I don't remember what they all were, but...
But, we don't have to delineate all of them, there could just be a simple reference that says, "All other conditions imposed", and then recite the date of the approval, remain in effect.
Okay. And the date of that approval was?
April 9th.
Except for the one where we're moving, right?
Yeah.
We can make that, um, you can...
It's fine, because we're saying all other, so we've got an express condition about hours, we're fine.
I think we have still a question up in the air about what we're doing with the toters.
So, you wanna discuss that, or are you gonna make a condition?
I would, I would like to follow up with Brad's idea and Spencer to, uh, haul those through the building and not, that's 78 feet that they're going from one end to the other, during the winter, I just don't see that working out.
Now, there's a question about Department of Health.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't really have a...
I don't believe that the Department of Health has a, a condition on this, because we're gonna be looking at something in an application that the storage of the waste is on facility, and my understanding, um, from questioning is that, um, the waste is actually allowed to be stored indoors.
So, that's what I was gonna ask you, so, instead of putting a condition that we're not sure that the Department of Health is okay with, are you suggesting a different location, or you suggesting a different way to storage? What, what is it you would suggest different?
What I'm suggesting is that we go through, we're not asking them to store, we're, the trash itself will be stored outdoors.
I'm sorry, to put the placement of it, yeah.
To take it to, not to haul it up north, but to do it east through the building.
Why not let them do, choose what works best for them?
I mean, if they wanna take it through the grass in the summer, I don't...
They wanna take it through the grass, they can take it through the grass.
My problem with that, you guys, is that I'm gonna end up, that those trashcans are not gonna get back where we...
So, if, if that's the concern, then...
There's 10-foot, 10-foot strip that goes 78 feet wide.
Right, I think if that's the concern, then we should be looking at how you can shield those in case they get moved up to the very north end of that building.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Do you see what I'm saying, I mean?
But can, it, yeah, but it's noted on the site plan, wouldn't that just be a, an enforcement issue that the toters are not where they're noted on the site plan?
If it was an issue, there would be, that would be a code enforcement, um, and site plan is a, one area that code enforcement, um, certainly can address, and we have in the past and do, I, whenever it's called upon.
But, but let me go back, the...
I'm not sure that we need to make it a code.
Yeah, so, the applicant did mention that if we wanted shielding based on that one drawing, he could do that. Do, would that satisfy your concern?
That would be helpful, I just, like I said, I don't, I see them, when winter comes along, being stored at the north corner of that building. I'm a lazy kid, I know what I would do, right?
But they still have to take all of the bags of trash all the way up to that corner of the...
Yeah.
I don't know.
I just don't want them, I think that Bernie suggested a fence at one point, I'm not objectionable to that.
I mean, the applicant suggested, I just wanna...
Well, the other thing is, on a lot of places, if it's in a, uh, garbage area, we've required a brick wall around it. So, a fence is not a bad substitute here.
Okay, so, how does the rest of the board feel about putting up the fence to shield it on the north? East, is that north?
Yes. On the northeast, or?
The north, um, where the pad is, right, for the storage.
So, southeast.
To shield the, the northern, the view from the north.
I see, okay. But if you're, hang on, no, what Alan's saying is, I think your concern is, your concern is that potentially the toters might get permanently moved to the north end of the building, and if that's the case, you want the...
Just left there for the winter.
You would want a fence at the northeast corner of the building.
Right, as I said, so if you look at the drawing up there, that's, you can sort of see the toter, that's what you're trying to shield if it gets moved closer, is that correct?
Yeah, that's fine.
I feel like we're, I feel like we're delving into the psychology of a 15-year-old right now, you know, and whether or not he's gonna drag the trashcan back to the...
I think we're just eliminating the reason...
No, no, I, I'm just, my, my question is, do we, do we even wanna open up the, the ability for, for someone to leave the trashcan at the northern, northeast corner of the building, I, I would prefer to put the fence enclosure around the pad he's already got there as a way to say, this is where the trashcans go.
I agree with you.
Right, that, and, and...
I'm actually okay with that.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Yeah, you know, and, and, and where my head...
That's sort of what I suggested to begin with, but whatever you need...
Yeah, I, I, I would much prefer that, you know.
The minute he was gonna be here, I'm happy to do.
So, give me the condition.
That the, um, pad for the tote storage is enclosed with a fence.
And then I, I would suggest type of fence and height, um, to be determined in consultation with the Department of Planning and Zoning. I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
So, pad for the tote storage is enclosed with a fence to be determined, or, I'm sorry.
Type and height.
Fence type. And height. To be determined.
Well, why, just a point to consider.
By staff, I'm sorry.
Why, why are we requiring this fence around these toters, but not around any of the other toters that would be in the cottages? Just a thought to consider.
So, we're only discussing this property tonight, you got a good point, you got a good point, but...
Wait, we didn't make them do that for any of the other, we're just gonna have, you know, a whole bunch of other toters.
But the only thing in discussion tonight is this building?
Yeah, I know, but I'm saying, I'm looking the other way, right, so we didn't do it then, so why do it now?
So, are you recommending that we take it away?
I don't know, I think, I think we're splitting hairs here over the toter. I will, I will go with however the way the board that wants to go.
I, I could live with this as an alternative, how is the rest of the board?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Just to make sure it's addressed. Yes, no, eliminate it?
I don't feel, I don't feel strongly either way, I mean...
Do I, but, I was more concerned about the view, but...
Just an extra imposition.
Uh, I'm sorry?
Just an extra, we're adding that we don't even can...
Brad, I guess the only thing I would say that makes it a little bit different is it's visible from Titus.
Titus.
So, I, I, I'm leaning towards...
Quite a ways back, though.
Agreed.
And the, that part of the building sets in, I, I don't know, I don't, I, whatever you guys want. I feel very, a waffle here, so if you guys think it's a good idea, then I can go along with that.
I don't think it's a bad idea, but I can also...
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna say, I don't think it's a great idea, I don't think it's a bad idea.
Not to, not to bela, belabor the fence discussion, but are we gonna let him put a gate in it?
Yes.
So, if he doesn't wanna take it through the building, he doesn't have to take it through the building, he can take it up the side of the building.
Right.
I just, we're, we're thinking about the snow, right, and you're gonna shovel a path, one option, right, is to shovel a path from the toters all the way out to the, the, the...
The fence is also gonna handle any trash that gets blown around, because...
All right, all right, okay, that's a good tool.
And the applicant was fine with it, I don't know why we're going there.
I was okay, I didn't, I didn't even think about a gate, so I don't know if I wanna go there.
And I, I think...
Well, how else are you gonna get the trash out?
Yeah, that can handle it, from my perspective, it, it sounds like the consensus is that the fence is for screening and for containment, so...
Yeah.
Uh, I think, again, the board should defer to staff about type, height, gate, et cetera, because there may be operational limitations that aren't known now that, that need to be worked through.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion.
Okay. All right. Anything else? We're good, so I'm gonna make a motion. Upon the matter of request, I'm sorry, in regards to case number PB 1805-1, upon the matter of request by I-Square LLC for revised site plan and signage approval, amending the proposed brewery located at premises 775 and 795 Titus Avenue in a mixed-use commercial district. I re, I recommend that we, uh, approve final site plan, correct? With the following conditions. The hours of operations to be determined by the New York State Liquor Authority, the hours of lighting, safety and security to remain one hour or longer if required by the State Liquor Authority.
So, to remain on post-closing?
I was gonna say post-closing.
Yeah.
A lower lighting fixture, a lower wattage lighting fixture, to minimize lighting spillage onto neighbor, neighboring properties. All other conditions im, imposed on the 4918 ruling. A pad for the tote storage is enclosed with a fence, fence type, height, and gate, if needed, to be determined by consultation with staff.
This still leaves the retail building as preliminary, is that right?
That's what it was before.
Okay, just kinda, I thought, so I just wanted to make sure that I understood everything correctly.
Okay, based on that motion, with those conditions, do I have a second?
Does your motion include signage approval?
I said that, yes.
Okay.
So, it was for revised site plan and signage approval.
Okay.
Second.
So, it's for revised site plan, I said final, just to correct that. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Once again, it's six aye and one absent. Thank you for once again doing business in honor, thank you.
Is that mine?
Yeah.
Did you steal from me?
Give me one second, please, for you. Michelle, will you please call the next case? Michelle, please call the next case.
Next item on the agenda is case number PB one eight zero five dash two, upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Joe Prestigiacomo for subdivision approval to subdivide a portion of town-owned land, tax ID number zero nine two point zero eight dash one dash two seven point eleven directly across from thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore Boulevard to create a ninety-seven point thirty-one by seventy-foot l- building lot in an R-one residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is John Scherraba. I'm here representing this application tonight. I think the, uh, public notice does an excellent job explaining this project. It's a little unique. Uh, Mr. Prestigiacomo lives at thirteen seventy-two Bay Shore and has been enjoying, um, town property for a good many years, um, parking vehicles and overflow parking, uh, across the street from his home. Um, so that being said, uh, he wanted to pursue an option of purchasing land, uh, from the town and has been working diligently with, uh, town staff and, um, going through a process of approval. It may be familiar to you, um, about two years ago down the street, Mr. Chris Brett did the same thing. So, um, we've been going through this process for quite a while, uh, working with town board and, and staff. And one of the first goals we had to do was get variances, uh, for a substandard lot. And that was done for a very specific reason, I'm sure, uh, Carrie can elaborate, but, uh, the intent was that the town wanted to create a parcel that cannot, uh, be built on for a residential home. So that's why we needed, uh, several variances that we requested. We also took, um, uh, the time to show a proposed garage if you wanted to pursue that, so we got a variance for that as well. So, uh, after receiving variances from the zoning board on March fifth, we made application to your board uh, for subdivision approval for this small parcel, uh, to be taken away from basically about fifty-eight acres that the town owns on the west side of Bay Shore. It's kind of a quick overview of what we're looking for tonight, but we're hoping that, uh, that you approve it and I can address any questions you have at this time.
Says in your letter that you're, he's hoping to construct a twenty-by-twenty garage, correct?
Yeah, that'd be in the future, uh, if there's any EPods or approvals we need to do, maybe we'll come back to this board if, if needed, but, uh, he has to own the property first and, uh, before expending any more money.
Okay, um, and Carrie, stop me if I can't ask this question, but what is he planning on? Oh, we're just doing a subdivision, right?
So, I, just for clarification, and certainly Rob can jump in here, uh, this board is tasked with, um, essentially approving where the lot lines go and, um.
Configuration, layout, all of that, of the, of the lot, not of the improvements.
The lot, correct, and so the, the actual construction of a uti- of a, an accessory structure, um, is something that would be subject to the variances that the applicant mentioned as part of the ZBA's already granted approval, so that piece of it has been addressed. And then the actual construction would be a building permit, and to the extent that would trigger the need for an EPod permit, we would cross that bridge when we come to it at that time. Um, and so if the EPod permit is needed in order to advance the construction, that's the only reason why this board would need to sort of contemplate the construction of a future accessory structure. And as long as I've got the mic, I'll just mention that, um, the, the ZBA, I'm sorry, I'll be here all night.
In a little more week.
Tommy's gonna kill me when he, uh, downstairs when they're making this recording. Um, so to the, uh, the, uh, ZBA and its approval related to the area variances and the use variance associated with the construction of an accessory without a primary, um, principal structure. The, they conditioned their approval on there being a deeded connection between this parcel and the parent parcel and the two parcels would always need to be sold together. And so that would be something that's reflected in the deed once the subdivision of land um, and transfer and sale is filed with Monroe County.
I have a question for counsel. When we do the seeker determination, don't we have to consider the whole action? So we know that there's gonna be a structure built here and we know that it's not conceptual because it went to ZBA and was approved. So when we do the secret consideration, don't we have to consider everything that we know?
Yeah, and Carrie's raising her hand, I'm happy to address it, but if, if you wanna talk about it, go ahead.
No, the question was for you, so I, I get points for knowing the answer.
You were jumping, chomping at the bit.
It's, I might.
Yeah, so, so, uh, your question's a little bit nuanced, Brad, in the sense that there is potentially a larger action here, but what we're tasked with is, is what's in front of the board tonight. Um, and, and you're getting at segmentation and it's a fair point. But based on how the application's being processed and presented and the fact that the applicant's representative, despite the ZBA approvals is, is indicating that development at this time is speculative, there's no concern about, um, seeker analysis vis a vis the full build-out at this point.
And an additional point is actually the accessory structure itself would be a type-two action and not require seeker on its own. It's only that if it's constructed in a way that requires an EPod permit and comes back before this board, that would be an unlisted action and require seeker. But we don't know that, any of that yet, it's all speculative.
And, and at that point, the environmental analysis that this board would do tonight would need to be re-upped and you would do a new environmental analysis studying the potential adverse impacts at that time. On, on second thought, I no longer have a question, John.
Pretty straightforward, it's lines on a map. Okay. With that, please have a seat. This is a public hearing, correct? With that, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to address this matter to the board? Seeing, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing.
Um, Carrie, could you please review the seeker? And obviously, since you went over a lot, you can make it much more.
Um, as indicated, um, this action is the proposed subdivision of land, the creating of a parcel. Um, it's, um, the proposed lot dimensions are gonna ensure that the newly created lot um, and/or structure couldn't support a separate dwelling unit in the future without the need for future variances and/or, um, the visiting the ZBA, um, with a new application, in which case they would have to, uh, lift or remove previously um, imposed conditions on the variance that they've granted associated with this particular, um, parcel. Um, there are no adverse impacts associated with the pre- proposed creation of the lot.
Thank you.
For that, negative declaration.
Is there any questions for the applicant before we move on to deliberation?
With that, is there anybody that'd like to make any comments, concerns?
I'll make a motion.
I think, Mr. Evilhead.
Um, no, my, I don't, my only concern is that, um, by subdividing, this, by subdividing out these lots, I know that we're only looking at the lines, right, which is making this difficult, although we know what's gonna happen probably in the future. What makes that area nice when I drove down there is that it's wooded. Um, so if we allow these changes to take place, it, some people might say that it degrades the character of the neighborhood because that, that, that hillside is no longer wooded. But if all we're looking at right now are lines on the page, then that's not a question for us to consider. Is that correct?
Yeah, and I, I don't wanna suggest that, that the point you're making isn't a relevant one. It, it's unfortunate, though, because it, that consideration doesn't rest with this board. That's really a town board determination in selling these lots to these homeowners to allow them to use and enjoy their property in a way that they've been doing and is consistent with that neighborhood. Um, but again, and, and your point's well taken, the purview here tonight is just to look at configuration of lot lines and things like that, so to the extent that you guys don't think that the lots configured appropriately or it should be a different shape or a different dimension, that's something that, that you could talk to John about, um, and engage in that discussion, but that's really what our role is tonight.
Okay, having said that, would somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, on PB one eight zero five two, regarding seeker, I'd like to make a motion that it's unlisted action with a negative declaration. See, I knew if I practiced that enough times.
Second. Got mine down, too.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
One absent.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, who seconded that motion?
It was Mr. Evil in the first.
Thank you.
That passes. With that, would somebody like to make a motion? The drawing of the lines, no, the subdivision.
Uh, upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Joe P. For subdivisional approval to subdivide a portion of town-owned land, tax ID number zero nine two point zero eight dash one dash two seven point oh one one directly across the street from one three seven two Bay Shore Boulevard to create a ninety-seven point three-one foot by seventy-foot building lot in an R-one residential district, I, uh, propose we approve the subdivision.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those approved, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and one absent? Passes six.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, John. Thanks, John.
Next case, please.
Next case on the agenda is case number PB one eight zero five dash three, upon the matter of request by Fennity Associates, acting as agent for Giuseppe's Restaurant and Pizzeria for revised site plan approval to amend onsite parking on premises four six zero five and four six one five Culver Road in a C-business district.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, uh, I'm Larry Fennity, an architect with Fennity Associates Architects at, uh, one twenty-nine South Union Street in Spencerport, New York. Uh, coming back to you again with regard to, uh, the, uh, application from Giuseppe's Restaurant. Um, we passed out a number of plans at the workshop, but we were a couple, uh, sheets shy. If there's anybody, I brought along some extras just in case there was anybody who needed a copy that didn't get one? Not seeing any.
Did you get one? Yes, I received mine.
Okay, I just wanted, I didn't want anybody to feel left out. If you remember, at the, uh, April twenty-third planning board, uh, hearing, uh, we presented an application for this, uh, site plan approval and you both were gracious enough to grant us approval. We have tried to, uh, in the drawings you have now, we have tried to incorporate all the conditions that were there and if we've got any, I'm sure the staff or, or the board will point them out to us. Then on May seventh, we went for the, uh, ZBA and they were kind enough to approve our, our, uh, requested setback variances but did not approve our parking, uh, request variance. So we are coming back to you with a revised site plan that changes a few things in order to allow us to meet zoning requirements for parking in this, um, uh, for this site, uh, and look for your approval with the, um, of the, the planning board, or of the, the site plan, I'm sorry. Gotta wake back up, I apologize. Um, so as, as you know, what we, we've done is we have changed the, uh, we've removed all of the, uh, raised area, raised deck area in the rear of the site, that'd be the west side of it. And in doing so, that's allowed us to increase the parking, uh, both along that side and the other side because of the way, the changes to the, uh, drive aisle, which gets us actually up to eleven parking spaces, which is one more than what the, uh, requirement is. Uh, we are still looking for additional parking, uh, in the area, if anybody knows of any, uh, for our staff, just in order to, uh, ensure the success of the business, but this does at least get us up to the, the zoning, uh, requirements and would make us, uh, work out with everything else. I think we've also, like I said, I think it's actually improved the site plan because, uh, before we had two outdoor seating areas and the one in the back and the one in the front were kind of disjointed from each other and this does make it a little bit simpler plan, uh, so that, uh, it should work a little bit better from that point of view. And again, I, I guess at that point, I don't myself hope any questions you might have.
Does anybody have any questions?
No, I just wanna make a comment. I think it works better, addresses some of the snow storage issues, so I think it works well.
Thank you.
Have you guys decided on, the trash, I would imagine, is going to be stored properly in containers, um, in the current, uh, dining facility, right?
Yes, I mean, the, we, the, we are going to have a little more space in the, the outbuilding there, and so that may in fact be used more for that than it was going to be before because we're only servicing a, a smaller area for the outdoor space. Uh, so, you know, be a combination of, of, of having it within the, uh, the, the building proper and that outbuilding that is, is.
But the outbuilding may be used in, for where the, uh, refuge truck comes to pick up the, uh.
It may in fact be used for that, yes. That's, that's, uh, the intent here is not, we, they, they will be serving on reusable plates and reusable and, you know, silverware, et cetera. So the amount of trash that they're, they're hoping to have generate is not, you know, a tremendous amount. Because again, it's a thirty-seat restaurant, and so, uh, as, as much as we'd like to think there'll be people standing in line all the time to get in there, uh, realistically, the amount of trash that we're going to be producing is not gonna be huge.
And then I just have a question, just 'cause I can't remember, did we put a, a condition on the lighting portion of this for when they had to go off?
I remember we, we removed that one light.
Yeah.
But I don't remember the hours of operation off the top of my head.
If we didn't, I would like to put that same condition that we just included.
I don't see a condition specific to the hours is.
Are you guys serving wine and beer and?
Yes, we will be serving wine and beer.
So you want the same condition that was on?
The, the one-hour post-closure, um, extinguishing of the lights. As if they were gas.
You're really dating yourself, Alan.
Mike knows what I'm talking about.
I'm glad you skipped over me.
Wow.
Wow.
Bernie's way too young. He wasn't over even a round of cap.
Only eight-thirty, we're already getting punchy.
They always talk when they're out of what they're talking about.
Is there any other questions?
No, I, I appreciate what you guys have done. I think that this is a good.
Thank you.
With that, you can have a seat. Open up the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address the board regarding this matter, please come to the podium.
And one person left, Bernie.
Should we make Dan come up or? With that, I'll close the public hearing. Is there, um, uh, Carrie, could you review, do we have to go through seeker again?
I think we approved seeker, didn't we?
It's, it's attached here, so.
Yeah, I'd suggest that the board reaffirm, if it's so inclined, its prior negative declaration, just recognizing the, the changes to the site plan. Um, and the reason for that is just based on the, uh, the size of the site and the, the changes here. Had it been a larger site, it might not have gone that way.
So Carrie, anything you wanna call out that you wrote?
Um, no, I, I think that the, the prior description of the action and the, um, potential impacts that were explored and the recommendation for the negative declaration associated with the site plan stands.
With that, does the board have any deliberation? Any other que- I'm sorry, any questions of the applicant prior to deliberating? And then I would ask the board, we received this today. Did everybody have a chance to review from? It was input that was given originally to the zoning board and then asked to be shared with the planning board. Vi. Uh, is that V-I-E-L-E, evil?
Um, I've possibly, so I'm not sure, when he's introduced himself on the phone and I've only communicated with him either through email to confirm receipt or by phone and, um, it was Ed.
That's it, he references Dimensions Two Thousand Inc. as the property owner of the adjacent property, so everybody had a chance to review that?
Thank you.
Yes.
Having said that, any other deliberations? Do I have a motion?
On PB one eight zero five three, regarding seeker, I propose that we do an unlisted action with a negative declaration.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. That was me, Michelle.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 And we have one absent. Just waiting for Bernie to catch up. Okay, someone else like to make a motion?
Make a motion, Mr. Chairman. On application PB one eight zero five dash three on the matter of request by Fennity Associates for forty-six oh five and forty-six fifteen Culver Road, uh, I would suggest that we approve the revised site plan as submitted.
There was a a condition that Mr. Richards asked for on lighting.
Oh.
Hours of lighting, safety and security to remain on one hour or as required by the state liquor. Are you okay with adding that?
Yes, sir.
I believe that was the only.
Can I just hear how that condition reads again?
Hours of lighting, safety and security to remain on one hour or as required by New York State Liquor Authority.
So one hour post-closure, close.
Oh, thank you. Or as required by New York State Liquor Authority?
If longer.
Or longer. I'll read it again. Hours of lighting, safety and security to remain on one hour post-closing or longer or as required by New York State Liquor Authority.
Yep, sounds good to me.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
No, go ahead, Brad, before we.
It doesn't make, it's one hour post-closing or longer, unlike, right?
Like, it should just be one hour post-closure.
Or longer if required by the state liquor authority.
Right.
Cause otherwise. Right? Just the semantics.
Are you an English teacher? Are you an English?
No, it's okay.
So lucky, cause it's English for a second la- for second.
Do I have a second?
I gave you a second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. And one absent. Thank you, once again, for doing business again.
Thank you very much, appreciate all the help, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Fennity. We have some minutes, guys, before we depart here.
Do you want a motion?
I just wanna see the dates here, sorry. The first set of meetings was April ninth. Can I have a motion, please, or comments?
I don't have any comments.
I moved to approve it.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 One absent. And minutes of April twenty-third.
Move that we approve the minutes of April twenty-third as presented.
Second.
I'll second, because Michelle does such a great job.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And one absent. Both minutes, excellent job, Michelle.
Before we adjourn, I just wanna say, on a point of personal privilege, that as we go forward on this I-Square project, we've eliminated all recreation space for those tenants. It is something that this board can require and we've not looked at it seriously, I'm not sure what we're gonna do with those folks as far as recreational space unless we're asking them to hang out in a bar and entertain their family. So, I'm gonna, that's gonna be an issue as we're going forward to do other buildings.
Thank you for your comments and I think I shared in the workshop, I lived in a mixed-use commercial where there was no no other area available, so I think it depends on the tenants that move there.
Right, but that's geared towards seniors.
Right.
That's what we've been presented with.
Right.
So Mother's Day, Mother's Day is gonna be an interesting.
Motion to close.
Yeah, so, excuse me? So I think, anything else or? Okay, anybody like to adjourn? We're good? So, all those in favor, closing the meeting?
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.